Meeting to order. Phil Stone, Jill Lannard.
Here.
Michelle Allen.
Here.
Greg Newsom here. Melissa Gifford.
Here.
White House. There. Present. Please join me in the present session. I'd like to be the speaker of the United States of America. And as we remember that which is said, "Life, nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Okay, I have two open forum requests. I have one and Piduck. And we had talked about that. And it is a partisan race, so we will disallow that one because of the fact the city needs to remain nonpartisan. You can do nonpartisan requests, but not for partisan reelection. I also have one for Blue Blue, pressing holding phones, Comcast data restriction notice, and the town hall forum announcement for Wednesday. Any other open forums? I have one amendment to the agenda. Item C, number two, funds for harbor field and the summer supply of food license. And I'd like to... The funds for harbor field and the summer supply of food license. And I'd like to add, item C, number two.
Oh, okay.
Just wait. I'd like to add, concerned citizens got some questions. On an open forum? No, on the agenda. And where at? Put it on all the others. In regards to... Questions, look to the document. And then the nine A. You have a change to the agenda? Motion approved?
I want you to approve the agenda as minded.
Second?
I'll second that.
Jill?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
I vote aye, Lloyd?
Aye.
Watson?
Aye.
Motion carries five o. Okay, consent agenda. Here it is. Motion to approve?
I want a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Michelle?
Aye.
I vote aye, Lloyd?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Motion carries five o. Okay, break down sheriff's report.
All the things really come to my mind. We've got some complaints about the crosswalk area, the new flashy shiny lights and speeding. I spent probably three or four hours the last three days there. To me, everything was perfect. No speeders at all, literally none. And everyone stopped. The people, when the lights went flashing, said, "Don't go." It's the only thing really jumping out to me.
Is your car visible? Do they see you standing or anything?
They do. It's hard, I mean...
Right?
Especially there. I mean, I could see a car going by, no people, or it's people and no cars, yeah. But if they know I'm sitting there, then they at least put that in their head.
Okay, activity reports. Jill?
Um, I attended several different union meetings. The personnel meeting, the EDA meeting, the... The Melody Conference meeting, Park and Rec. Missed Montrose Day Committee last night, so Michelle's not gonna be on that one. I think that's about it for the month.
Michelle?
Council meetings, EDAs, multiple union meetings, Park and Parkman, PAC, and all the markets.
I attended council meeting, personnel committee meeting, union negotiation meeting, EDA meeting, Montrose waiver to chamber commerce. Also had a special meeting with Sheriff Eggman, Captain Anselman and Lieutenant Penley, and Mayor Connie Holmes of Waverly, which we will discuss at council regarding coverage for Wright County Sheriff in a special meeting. Also attended the FAW meetings, conference events with the Boy Scouts, two Eagle Scout border reviews. We have two maps. They have now four Eagle Scouts in Montrose this year. Several other scout meetings in the Camp Reade for scout leader training.
Let's see, we had several union negotiation meetings. I attended the first hour of the comprehensive plan vision session. I think we had our annual meeting. I also attended the Veterans Day Dinner that was put on by the FAW with vets from St. Cloud. The District Community Teaching Marine Council meeting on Friday, and that is it.
All right, council meetings, EDA, WCAP meetings, negotiations, and other special meetings, and the visiting system. Frank Parker?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Attached in your packet is the September activity report. Kind of busy month for us, just doing other special events and stuff. Calls were a little bit down, but not too much, so kind of a blessing in disguise as far as that goes. Any questions on the activity report, sir? Many thanks for everyone in reference to the structure of fire. Next item is pager purchase. I sent out an email to all council regarding purchases for pagers. They're necessary evil in our line of work, we pagers, or else we don't know that we're needed. Our current stock of pagers are beginning to die, and we are in need of new pagers so that we can continue doing what we do. The money is in the budget. We haven't spent our communications budget totally for the last several years. The cost of the new pagers with a three-year additional service warranty and some added extras and stuff is $14,095. And then there's a $1,200 rebate that will see in six to eight weeks after we purchase it. I'd be looking for a motion to go ahead and purchase those.
How many in there do you have?
That would be thirty. So if we have twenty-five guys right now, that would give us five extra. Thirty's our little magic number that we have with how many lockers and everything. We'd also be keeping some of our good old pagers to use as spares as well, so.
Motion? I'll make a motion to buy the pagers. Second?
I'll second that.
I vote aye, Lloyd?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Motion carries five o for the pagers. Initial cost of $14,095, but a rebate of $1,200 expected.
Thank you. The next item I have is just some information on Fire Prevention Week. This week is Fire Prevention Week. It started Sunday, October 9th, and goes through October 15th. It is held every year on the week that October 9th falls in. It commemorates the great Chicago Fire, which occurred in 1911, as a way to keep the public informed about the importance of fire prevention. On October 9th, flags were flown at half-staff in recognition of the National Falling Firefighters' Memorial Service, which was held in Maryland. An annual theme is selected yearly for Fire Prevention Week by the National Fire Prevention Agency. This year's theme is "Don't Wait, Check the Date." Replace smoke alarms every ten years. All smoke alarms should have a sticker or some kind of marking with the manufacturer date. Alarm should be replaced ten years from that date. This kind of becomes important in our community because we saw rather large housing going over ten years ago. And a lot of people probably have older smoke detectors in than what they probably should. So it's a very reminder to everybody to check your smoke detectors, not just for the batteries every six months, but also check that date. If they're over ten years, they should be getting replaced. Along with that, some activities that we're doing here at the fire station. We had our open house last Wednesday. And then this week, students from the Montrose Elementary School and all the other school buildings over there and other local schools are gonna be coming out to visit the fire station, where there'll be toddler fire prevention and fire safety. They'll give a tour of the station and take part in some other activities here at the station, so. Fire prevention is something that we're very passionate about. Most fire departments are. And it's just something that we've continued to do throughout the years. It was started about thirty years ago here by Mike Mark, him, former chief, still on the fire department and everything. Where we start having kids come down here, or we went to the fire station, so we like doing it. It's fun to see the kids, the kids like it, get them out of school for a little bit, so. We're looking forward to that this week as well. So just kind of an update on what that's all. And then the last thing on my agenda item, I'm gonna kind of defer to Justin here to help you with it a little bit, is an update on feasibility report for fire station. When we first approached the council on this, it was thought that we would probably move forward with expanding our current fire station. After creating the building committee and having a couple of meetings and stuff, some other options were looked at maybe more favorably, including maybe building a new station altogether, vacating that, leaving it for some other city use or something. So with this, it kind of expands the scope of the project, the feasibility report, because we're kind of looking at two feasible options at this point. We're looking at the expansion and then possibly the building of new. So with an expanded scope of feasibility report comes an expanded cost. Again, these feasibility studies have no expiration date, so once we have them, we have them. It's good information to have, and it will hopefully help the building committee, fire department, and council as a whole, try to figure out which direction is best for fire department, the city, and all the parties involved, so. Justin?
Do you want me to add more, certainly can, but I think Kevin said pretty well. Further discussion?
Have you started on the first part of it yet?
We've had a couple of meetings and stuff.
But we haven't actually, Justin hasn't done anything on the first part of it.
We did create, we did one of the exercises so far, yes?
Yeah, we did a space needs analysis, kind of what we would be looking at. And that was kind of geared towards a newer station type thing. Whereas opposed to what we have now, you have to add on to what we have and figure out, you know, measure exactly what we have and see what we need and stuff, and go with that numbers, so. The cost, I believe, is $7,300 in addition to the previously approved scope. So it does just about double the cost, but again, we're getting two feasibility studies, and we didn't want to short ourselves on missing an opportunity that might be better for us without investigating that, so.
What would the location be for the one?
No idea. That would be something that we'd have to look into with feasibility.
That's part of that study.
Yeah. We have to go and look for possible land options, whether it's city-owned land, or private land, or something like that. Figure out how much space we need for it, and then proceed from there, so.
Would there be any cost share for the government for fire department needs?
What do you mean, cost share?
Well, bond or something.
We would definitely have to be bonding for this project. We're probably talking minimum of a $2 million dollar project, I would think, by the time it's from start to finish, and we're all said and done, regardless of which direction we take. So we're looking at probably doing a bonding type situation, so there'll be some government share in that as well, so. But it's another asset that the department and the city has together, so.
Motion to approve?
I want a motion to approve the additional $7,300 for the feasibility study.
Second?
I'll second.
Lloyd?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
I vote aye. Carry five o.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Park and Rec?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. We are meeting October 3rd. If there's any questions in your packet, feel free to ask me.
Want to park in the park though?
It was okay. Okay, yeah, we have a lot of third.
Really? That's good. The weather wasn't too bad for you.
It was a little bit bad. There was a pretty good turn, but we had, um, four, and then multiple, maybe thousand or so. So, yeah, everybody's kind of looking forward to next year.
You guys need to speak into your mics, please. Sorry, I can pick up.
What about charitable work of the year? How are the nominations coming on that?
We've got two, I believe. It's not coming in very good.
Well, there was a missed date. It went out that we wanted the nominations back by the second of October, when it should have been the 28th of October. So Maggie did update that, though. She put up, she redid her Facebook or city page.
Yeah, but it does say RSPP by the 20th.
Yep, it does now, but it originally said the second. So she's got it all changed.
Well, I received my notification in the mail, so I think all of that notification was sent out. Right, you sending more in, and then the RSPP before the EDP.
You got two nominations back, or two RSPPs back?
Two RSPPs. I don't think we've got any nominations.
And we do have our judges in place, so one of the nominations come in, so.
That's on the 23rd, right?
And then you guys, we're all gonna get together and figure a date after we confirm the judges. Sometime in that week. It was discussed, though, at the last council meeting to have a letter sent to an individual. And that letter did, it got sent, but we asked to have a copy of that in the Park and Rec minutes. Can we still get a copy of that?
I think, I mean, I think it's, would be a data request, because it's a letter that's sent to a resident, so I don't know if we really want to get into making that a public document. I mean, I just feel like if you want to see it, you could put in a data request for it, but I don't really feel like it needs to go in a packet.
Okay. Anything else?
And the senior event was not very good. Wasn't good at all. Yeah, it was poor. And great, we started at the C.
No, I stopped in the C, you guys.
We just need to get a better process to notify most individuals, so they haven't told me that, because there was some, there was, it was just lacking ultimately. They should have been posted in more places for those individuals to see, and there should have been better effort made to get that notification up to those near residents, so.
That's all I have. Thank you.
I have funds for the harbor field. And I mentioned you're not registered later with Girl Scouts.
I am.
They said, they also said you're not registered since September 2015.
Correct.
And we had said in September, the funds for the harbor field would go to the Girl Scouts. But I don't have any, since you're not registered later, and I'll have everything to show where that actually went.
Right, we are with that item, registered with the council. I have email to prove that. There was a miscommunication as lack of me or the troop leader that my daughter's working with, not Julie Shrobridge, but either way, it's all fixed. So we are registered, my daughter's registered, we are Julia troop. She is a Julia troop, actually. And the finances are being done right now, going to Carla at Girl Scouts.
Carla, which troop?
She is the main coordinator to Girl Scouts Wisconsin of the Mountain. It's not a troop, it's the council.
Okay.
Carla.
If you can give us a record of that, that would be good. We can show that actually went to a nonprofit, like we said, it would be it's a donor.
Yep. And like I said, I think it was a miscommunication, because my daughter actually works with a different troop through all of that, and so it just kind of, but it's all right.
And then the city food license that was used for the summer supply of events?
Yeah. I did talk, or actually, Wendy brought that up, I believe, to Jill, which she could have brought that to me, which is fine, it's all good. Last year, we did it the same way, so I didn't realize that it needed to be changed. So if you want, the Girl Scouts can pay you back for that. I just, we just need to make sure if the Girl Scouts are gonna do it, they have to pull the license and not the city. I didn't know the Girl Scouts did it last year, I thought. I just thought you guys didn't sell anything. The Girl Scouts, again, she did it through the troop leader that she is working with on the Golden One, so, yeah.
So we pull a direct license on that, which is kind of extended to a third party of the city license.
Right, and if you want, we could, like I said, we can, the Girl Scouts can pay you back, her troop bill, so.
Okay, EDA?
Mayor and Council, at the September EDA meeting, the EDA approved a contract with FRF Productions to do the EDA marketing video, pending a good reference check. Staff followed up with three previous clients and received outstanding reviews. The EDA approved the contract of $3,500 for the video, not to exceed $4,000. Staff has since, that meeting held a teleconference with Tony Smith of FRF Productions to initiate the process. We did discuss some items with him, kind of where will the completed video be shown, the message we're trying to communicate, what would be, what does successful video look like, the length of the video, key points, and so forth. At this time, we, as still, have decided that three interviews from business owners and members of the community would be, would be great, and the ideal completion date would be the end of 2016. We'd like to get started this week with Tony. So staff is, will continue to work with Tony Smith to develop an overall vision and script for the video, and any input is welcome at this time. Right now, we kind of have, we're thinking of a couple businesses in town, or some people at those businesses we've kind of contacted, and just to get a feel if they want to participate, but, yeah, so at this time, it was just kind of an update we wanted to give, and any input is welcome. And we will continue to kind of stay in touch with the council on the, on the video.
Any discussion? Any personnel changes, do you want to run through that?
Sure. So we had some personnel policy updates that we completed or suggested, I guess, within policy itself, such as the employee work schedules, and then I believe the renewing language was adjusted as well. We also discussed the utility clerk to position, whether she was being supervised by the Department or if she should move more into a cabin position. And then emergency management, NIMs training, and relative official NIMs training was discussed with Kevin with Fire Department. There was also a discussion on the threats of workplace harassment, and then just general other business was discussed. Anything else to kind of explain throughout the minutes?
Personal policy amendments?
Mayor and Council, in front of you, we are looking for a motion to approve amendments to the personnel policy related to language regarding veterans' preference, rest and meal breaks, and performance reviews. They were approved. This language was approved at the September 19th, 2016 Personnel Committee meeting, and a new language is in the packet for review. I know I got kind of, it's kind of hard to see, I tried to highlight it, but I can highlight it right now. So there's, under employee recruitment and selection, there's just some veterans' preference language. Under rest period and meal breaks, there's just a little line that says employees are expected to use these breaks as intended and will not be permitted to adjust work start time and time, or lunchtime by saving these breaks. And then under performance review, at a previous council meeting, there was just a request to add employees may address concerns with their performance review with the Personnel Committee or the State Council.
Motion to approve?
I want a motion to approve the amendments to the personnel policy.
Second?
I'll second that.
Melissa?
Aye.
Jill?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
I vote aye, Lloyd?
Aye.
Motion carries five o for personnel policy. Complaint policy?
Mayor and Council, at the September 12th City Council meeting, the council was presented in the citizens complaint policy, and it was discussed. I want to thank staff to seek additional information as to what other cities do with regards to anonymous complaints. We did receive some responses. Some cities do allow for anonymous complaints, and some do not. The, the change that I made was in your packet, I took out, I took out a section, and I added a section that said, "City staff will respond to complaints which are submitted anonymously, nonetheless cannot guarantee the adequate follow-through without the ability to follow-up." So it's just kind of stating that we're gonna do what we can, and we will follow up, and I think that that was kind of what the council wanted. But if we don't have anyone to follow up with, I mean, we can't guarantee that, that we'll satisfy, um, get the issue resolved. So, you know, I think this is a big change, we're just gonna, we're gonna follow up, but if we don't have anyone to follow up, we can't guarantee that it'll get resolved, so. Looking for further discussion, and, um, I'm, I'm, I'm.
I have a question. There was a complaint from the last, last month's meeting regarding issues. Do you recall that? A resident in the audience talked about.
Okay.
Was there a follow-up on that? I believe that we're gonna follow up. That could be why.
I guess I don't remember what the complaint was.
Somebody had called City Hall, was regarding some information and giving information, and that information was given out when it shouldn't have been.
I don't...
And that information was given out when it shouldn't have been. That person is here right now.
Oh. I mean, yes, I did talk to staff about that.
Okay. Was...how did you know when you talked about it? Just in general?
Just in general. Just that we needed to ask staff, we need to be careful. And that this...when people do give us information, that we need to keep it confidential.
Okay. And I do like this. I mean, there's some sense you're going to follow up, but there's no guarantee. So, I appreciate that you did that.
Anything else? More discussion? Recommendation to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the updated citizens complaint policy.
Okay.
I'll second.
Michelle?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
I would aye Lloyd.
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Motion carries five oh. Okay. Good afternoon.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor Council. Public Works Department has proposed a project in your packet tonight regarding the addition of SCADA monitoring for the Lemberman Lift Station. For those who aren't familiar where the Lemberman Lift Station is, it is the lift station that's located at Saffra Avenue and Highway twelve in the industrial park. It is the second largest load station within the city, which handles the industrial park and the Pecan Hills subdivision. Currently, the alarm...the current alarm system is a localized buzzer and a flashing light that is very, very reliant on the public notifying us if there's an issue, especially after hours and during weekends. And that increases the potential for bypass, overflow, or backups within homes. We've had this project on our radar for several years. We've been budgeting for it for at least three years. And currently have the money available to install this. In Control is a single source vendor for us. They handle all our SCADA equipment within the city. And they will also be the provider for the SCADA system upgrade for the Lemberman Lift Station if approved. In addition to that equipment, we also need a twenty-foot pole. It runs wirelessly from the lift station to, you know, the old water tower. We have a receiving antenna there. And that's where it communicates through the network, through the city, and eventually down to the plant. And then just a few isolated materials to set the pole in concrete. So, with that, we're looking at for a total of fourteen thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars for the project.
Discussion? Motion to approve the SCADA upgrade?
I'll make a motion to approve the fourteen thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars for the SCADA upgrade.
Second?
I'll second.
Michelle?
Yeah.
Michelle?
Aye.
I would aye Lloyd.
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Motion carries five oh for SCADA upgrade. Thank you. Planning Commission minutes?
Mayor Council, the September twenty-first, two thousand sixteen Planning Commission meeting minutes are in front of you. If you have any questions, I can answer them.
Any questions? Anyone add?
I thought Cory was going to be here. Mr. Mayor, President Council, we just had a big discussion about the off-street parking. As of now, we only allow asphalt concrete to block. And we decided to allow contactable and previous service, class five, or animal fresh drive. And we had a short meeting because we had the...
Positioning.
Positioning meeting afterwards. That's all on the air.
All right. Ordinance twenty sixteen eleven.
Mayor Council, requested action tonight is that you are being asked to take action on ordinance two thousand sixteen dash eleven, which is in your packet, which would amend chapters ten sixteen dash fifteen and ten nineteen dash four of the zoning ordinance related to parking of recreational vehicles. The proposed amendments to change the parking space design standards to allow class five gravel for recreational vehicle parking and allow the space to encroach within the side setback line provided five conditions are met. A little bit of background, it appears that the city code in the past at some point allowed for class five to be used for recreational vehicle parking stalls with some encroachments in the side setback to occur. The zoning ordinance was amended at some point and this provision was removed. Staff has received several requests and therefore brought it back to the Planning Commission for input. The Planning Commission discussed the amendments to the off-street parking requirement for recreational vehicle parking and held a public hearing at the August and September meetings. They debated the pros and cons requiring the parking space to be paved and remain out of the five-foot setback. Those in favor of allowing class five noted a prior precedent and the cost associated with paving the extra space. They...those opposed to the modification expressed a desire to improve the aesthetics of the community and set a higher standard. After much discussion, the Planning Commission voted three one one to recommend the following amendments. In your packet, the new language is illustrated in bold. Language that was removed from the ordinance is striked. I don't know if you want me to read it all.
No.
But it is...it is in front of you from your review. And it is...we do have ordinance two thousand sixteen dash eleven that further would be the...if passed would change the zoning ordinance to reflect those changes in the new packet. So, the City Council is asked to take action on the enclosed ordinance amendment in the sections of the zoning ordinance and/or... or a copy of the ordinance language which would be adopted by the City Council or take action to leave the code as currently written requiring the parking spaces for mortgages be paved and be placed outside the five-foot setback.
Discussion? Just saying that for class five or do we include the cross?
Yeah. So, we're including class five, but also other previous surfaces that are approved by the city engineer. Other similar materials.
Then the Planning Commission was four, three one?
Three one one. Yep.
Further discussion? Motion to approve as amended?
I'll make a motion to approve ordinance twenty sixteen dash eleven and amend it in chapters ten sixteen dash fifteen and ten nineteen dash four of the zoning ordinance.
Second?
I'll second that.
I would aye Lloyd.
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Motion carries five oh. You want the twenty sixteen thirty, the publication event?
And so, in front of you is resolution two thousand sixteen dash thirty. And this is just authorizing the summary publication ordinance two thousand sixteen dash eleven in the newspaper.
Discussion? Motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty sixteen dash thirty.
Second?
Second.
Lloyd?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
I would aye. Motion carries five oh.
White Tail Ridge. Meeting, Mayor Council, for you this evening is approval for White Tail Ridge Phase Two Development Agreement. As you know, you approved Phase One at one of the previous meetings, which is the phase where the wear course is being installed this fall. At that time, we also talked about Phase Two, which is the single-family lots further to the west, starting that where the disc golf course is. And then basically to the west of there. Basically, this development agreement more or less just formalizes the requirements that still need to be done by the developer before anybody can build a home in that development or that phase. So, this would be recorded with each lot so that the current property owner or any future property owners would be well aware of the requirements that are in place before they can build a home on the lot. After this was inserted in your packet, there were a couple revisions that were made. One being we added some language about the public utilities, i.e. the water main sanitary sewer, the storm sewer. Looking through our records, those were never formally turned over to the city and never formally tested. Developer had walked away before that work was done. So, we did add that in here as well that that work needs to be done by the developer before building permits are issued. And then also the source construction capital was just changed to match exactly the name on tax rolls. And also, instead of second edition, we just call it Phase Two because it's actually divided under one class. I would recommend approval of the development agreement. If you have any questions, you have.
Are we on track for that final lift this year, Sean?
We are. Contractor will be starting on that work on Wednesday. Currently, they're planning to do it on Wednesday and Thursday.
Any further discussion? Motion to approve?
I'd like a motion to approve the amended development agreement for White Tail Ridge Phase Two.
Second?
Phil Sackel.
Melissa?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
I would aye Lloyd.
Aye.
Motion carries five oh to approve the White Tail Ridge agreement.
Is it for one particular purpose?
Okay. Your whole business. Question to Council?
I'd like to call Jim Otto. Good evening. So, last month, I came up here and I had some concerns about some of the council conduct. And I still have some concerns about conduct. And this would actually concern you, Greg. You said some things and did some fact checking. So, I just kind of wanted to maybe, you know, give you a chance to kind of clear the air on some of that. I asked Melissa last week about a email that you sent over to Michelle. And I asked about the cost of the city by sending that to the attorney. Do you remember what you responded to that?
Not exactly, no.
Okay.
I do think that emails are no cost of the copy. I don't believe there's a cost for that, is there? Obviously, it's no action. And we already approved approximately five months ago that any action that was billable hours by the legal team would have to be approved by the city clerk treasurer as a method so that we did not have individual task teams for billable hours to the legal team.
Okay. Because when I asked her, you would real quick chime in. Matter of fact, you said not a thing.
No, it was just saying the copy. It didn't cost a thing.
Okay. So, you said you knew for a fact.
Well, I know that it's not charged a bill of hours for an email being copied to a lawyer.
That was in your explanation at the time. And when I pressed it and asked really, you said yes. And I asked you, I said, did the attorney do it for free? And you go uh-huh because it hasn't been billed.
The attorney's contract calls for them to take calls and to take emails at no charge unless there's a review or action required by them. It's a bill of hours. And that has to be approved by the city clerk treasurer based on what the council deems as a requirement for the legal team to have billable hours.
But that wasn't the answer you needed at the time. Because you basically, when I asked you if you did it for free, you said uh-huh because it hadn't been billed. So, you said you worked it the last four months.
I looked at last four months, which would have been through...would have been through August before that.
Correct.
We had no billable hours for those four buildings that I looked at. Certain counties said we will not have individual council members directly in billable hours.
And that's kind of what I thought too. But then when I asked, I said, oh, really? Because the email that was sent was in September. And I specifically asked you, you have the bill already. And you responded, I do.
Oh, I did not. I misstated.
No. I actually went back and watched the video multiple times. And that's...you were pretty confident. You actually sat back and you was like, I do. You were pretty cool about it, actually.
Well, I misstated. I did not have September at that time.
Okay. You either misstated or you lied. What would you?
I don't think I lied.
Well, it wasn't right. And then I asked you again. I said, you do. And you said yes. So, you...twice you said you had. And you didn't.
In fact, I don't have two thousand...September two thousand sixteen yet.
So, when did you see that email? Because you said you saw it. So, you didn't...
I was referring to August.
Okay. Because I asked you specifically about September.
I haven't seen it.
Oh, you lied to me.
No, I didn't lie to you. Okay? And people are not telling you a lie if they did misstate it, okay? So, just because everything comes up to you and someone says something, doesn't mean it's a lie. So, don't be calling people a liar at this speed.
Well, I considered...
That's not true.
And you called me a liar. Did I say you lied?
Yes, you did. You just did. You just said I lied. That's not true.
Okay. And then, so I just wondered when you saw that. So, that's kind of clear that up. The other thing you were wrong on when I asked Melissa about when she was kind of asking Michelle about her post being untrue, you were also real quick to chime in on that one also. And when I asked her about what part of her post was untruthful, do you remember this part of this conversation?
As I recall, the post that she posted was in response to the social security issue.
Okay.
And that came back to me. And yes, and I told you that social security does receive an adjustment for cost of living. In fact, I have right here some social security administration...
I've seen that, yes.
I also have a copy of Michelle's email that came to the city.
Yeah. When did that come in?
That came into the city on the twelfth of September.
That came into the city or that was sent to you by the city administrator?
Sent to me by the city administrator.
Okay. So, she does all the groundwork for your Facebook stalking and...
It's not Facebook stalking when it becomes an issue where it comes back to the city as an issue that a resident brings up. And the resident says this is not true. Yes, it's an issue.
Because you actually chimed in and you said that she said and that her post said that social security recipients do not receive raises. Now, where...
Her post said, and I quote, "Funny, this was just discussed at a meeting I was at. And certain someone called a resident a liar that stated, yes, social security does get the cost of living. Just goes to show that he is a dip S...like...T." So, if you're asking whether or not this is appropriate, it sure as heck isn't.
No, my question wasn't on how appropriate. My question was truthful of the post in the meeting that was posted that you said that she was...that was untruthful.
It was not true.
Well, and the post where did...
In fact...
Where did she claim? Where did she claim? Anywhere in those posts that they did not receive, that they do not receive?
It says right here, a resident, a liar. And that's untrue. I did not call a resident a liar in that meeting. That is untrue. It's wholly untrue. What I stated and I quoted was that...I stated, yes, they do. When someone in the room said, well, social security recipients don't get the cost of living. I said... When someone in the room said, well, social security recipients don't get the cost of living. I said, yes, they do. That was my comment. Didn't call anyone a liar.
Well, you said that her statement was untrue. She didn't say anything about them not getting raises. They just said that there were years that were not.
She said I was liar. I said, that's untrue. I didn't, she said I called someone a liar. She said I called someone a liar and that's not true, so. So yes, I know it was not true.
Moving on. We talked a little bit about your pursuance of Michelle and her open meeting violation and the cost to the city.
Exactly. You, the cost of that was, for my cost in legal referral, six hundred and seventy-five dollars and the cost for Michelle's cost of the lawyer was three hundred and ninety dollars.
Okay, so about a thousand dollars.
And I have a copy of the letter that she refused to sign.
So, so a thousand dollars to the city that no one advised you discouraged from?
Thousand dollars to the city for violation of the open meeting law that she knew was wrong.
So is there going to be a cost to the city when you write yourself up a reprimand for your meeting violation for your?
We want to talk about open meeting violation, open meeting law violations. We got a lot more to talk about.
I know. You have, you have, you have many of them. Resident standing there and said, for every finger you point, you're going to be back at you and so. But you showed up at a part rec meeting back in November that Michelle was there, she was liaison for her. Jill was there, which I understand that she attends frequently. And you showed up and?
And I left because it was a violated open meeting law to have to form.
My understanding is that you were in the meeting. You were drawing diagrams on the board and everything. That's not true.
Not that it wasn't posted.
It wasn't posted. You're right. That would be a violation of open meeting law.
The one that I were posting, I left because there were three people there.
Well, there are many people saying that you were there and you actually ran the meeting, that you were talking, you ran, you drew diagrams on the board. So to me, so I was wondering if you were going to write up whatever reprimand to yourself. Because anybody knowingly or willingly violates open meeting law and doesn't wish us anything apologetic should be reprimanded. Those are your words.
They are.
Next issue.
Well, let's stay on open meeting law. If you want to talk about open meeting law, you should talk about the November thirteenth meeting. Then I can count at least seven open meeting violations on one hand or on two hands for that meeting. So if there's an issue with open meeting laws, you need to start a little closer to home.
No, I'm just saying you shouldn't be throwing stones if you live in Glass House, Rick. That's all I'm saying.
And I just reiterate.
And a lot of mistakes are minor, but you pursued, it was basically you and your personal attack on Michelle.
It wasn't a personal attack. I pursued an issue for the blatantly blatant and willful violation of the open meeting law where private data was given out in an open meeting. And when I asked her whether or not she knew it was a violation, she said, yes, she did. And when I asked her, and you did it anyway, she said, so?
Okay, was that?
And that's exactly what she said.
Was that knowingly and willingly?
That's knowingly and willingly. She admitted that she willfully did it.
Well, that's a problem. So you got inside her head and knew what her intentions were.
When she makes that statement, that's what she said.
Well, if you want to reprimand yourself on that one. Also, moving on to your next one, you posted in the next door Montrose, we've come through some tumultuous times and a thrust upon us which became, which because of the actions of the November fourth, two thousand fourteen necessitated funding taxes to cover the financial follow-up from council. Actions that were defensible, either labor agreements or legal arenas. You would like to mitigate those costs by reducing the settlement over fifty percent.
Well, the cost here, the total cost for the termination of Barb Swanson without cause that was defensible was two hundred and sixteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars and thirty-four cents. That includes the settlement of Barb Swanson, the attorney fees, the temp hire, the unemployment cost for a second quarter for that temp hire, the cost of a duplicated position at the city, the additional cost for Shawn and Wendy's wages because of the additional workload that was granted, special meeting cost for council because they were still on fifty dollars a meeting at that time, cost for an outside employee hire for David Drum Associates. So two hundred and sixteen thousand dollars for the cost of that blunder by the previous council.
But what made it addressable because?
Because it could not be defended. When the lawyer who's assigned to adjudicate the case looks at you and our lawyer, the city lawyer, and tells you, I don't believe I'm hearing this. You don't have a leg to stand on. The charges they brought were indefensible because they did not do it properly.
Did you at any point ask any of the previous council members what happened and why it happened?
I asked our legal team what happened, whether or not we could address it. And I talked with, we had several discussions about the process with the entire council.
My question was is that you asked any of the previous council members if the reason for the termination? Because I've been asked all of them. They told me you have not.
I saw the reasons that they placed on it and I worked with the lawyer in reference to it.
Well, don't you think it would have been in the city's best interest if you find out a little bit of all going on?
At that point, no, because they had already created a situation where there was cause to believe that there was creating a harassing environment in the workplace.
Usually enough for a lot of cases.
That's usually enough for a lot of cases that probably would have cost us more than a million dollars if it had gone to court. Because believe me, if it had gone to court, the city would have been cost a heck of a lot more than what was cost in the settlement.
Well, you know, I find it interesting. You did throw the two hundred and sixteen thousand dollar number out there because in the email you sent to her residence in May of last year, you told him it was a hundred and thirty-five thousand.
Yep, well, that may have been, that was my guess of it on what it cost.
And then your post here says almost a quarter million. And then in the September meeting, you said it was two hundred and seven thousand, so which is, is it just beginning?
It's two hundred and sixteen thousand, seven hundred and seventy-nine dollars and thirty-four cents. That last count.
Okay.
That's what I had.
So and then when you, when you did the negotiation on that, going against the city's, the city attorney's recommendation, you did not involve any of the previous council members in the negotiation?
The reason we didn't involve the previous council members was based upon my discussion with the attorney was that there was a feeling that they were out to get her and it would be detrimental to the discussions we were having with the, with Barb Swanson at that time.
And my understanding is the attorney recommended that part of the previous council members be on the part negotiation deal. Which probably would have been in the city's best interest. And I know you like to shift a lot of blame to the previous council and whatever it is, but maybe part of the reason was your inability to negotiate that deal.
Maybe part of the reason they should have fired her in the first place without just cause.
Because one of the attorneys.
That might have been a reason?
One of the attorneys also said that part of the reason was cleaning up what you undone, what you had had to undo by your secret meetings with other negotiations. And the labor union.
Meetings were not secret.
And apparently those meetings were done without city legal representation there. Is that true?
No.
So that's not, okay, so the attorney behind that.
Answered what?
About you meeting, you talking with the labor guy without him being there. So that's not true, okay? I'd literally give him first, but okay. And then, you know, I'm just concerned about that whole negotiation because back in November two thousand fourteen in a Facebook post that you posted that has since been deleted, so there's probably something wrong there. You stated that you reached out to Barb to see how she was doing after the election. So were you concerned about your friend? Is that what, why that took place? Because it seems like that everybody in the city is your friend. You don't always have the city's best interest. You tell the city worker guys that if there's any complaints, there's any problems, they need to come directly to you. They not even talk to any of the council members and they can't even have any complaints of all chance because he's your friend. So it sounds like that you're more.
I haven't told people to come to me if they have these problems or anything, you guess. That kind of means open door policy.
It just sounds like to me that you're just more concerned about keeping your friendships around city hall and your neighborhoods and the best interests of the city. That's my opinion.
That may be your opinion. You're welcome to have it in it.
Okay. Also, let's talk a little bit about the fiscal responsibility that you promised us. Seventy-four hundred dollars on the comparable worth. I remember Michelle offering an alternative, a no-cost alternative, which we have done in the past, which many other cities do. And you wanted to spend seventy-four hundred dollars on this.
We agreed as the council to spend that based on having an outside source to do that as well.
Did that pass five votes?
No, it didn't pass five votes.
But we don't have to have five votes.
You know what, I'll have them approach us.
I do have them work.
Good, that's a good thing.
So that doesn't mean you, you as a council, it was voted on and.
It was voted on and agreed as a council.
Okay. Also, your twelve hundred dollar mileage reimbursement. Came within a dollar of the maximum of all. That's pretty convenient, isn't it?
I didn't know that it was within a dollar of the maximum of all.
Okay. All right, and plus aren't those expenses supposed to be pre-approved by council before you take your little field trips?
Not little field trips. They were approved. The things that I had done have been approved by council.
And how did the city benefit from that? Because I don't recall you bringing up any of that, which.
Contrary to what you might believe, Jim, the mayor is responsible for representing the city, not only in the city, but also outside of the city.
So you went Southern Minnesota to look at solar panels and we just went to Long Island?
No, I went to St. John's University to look at solar panels.
Okay. We have, we're summer walkers.
I went to St. John's University to look at solar panels because that's where some sheriffs have been reviewed.
Yeah, and just, you know, your bullying behavior and stuff, you know, telling Michelle when you got involved with the whole park down there, you basically turned it into, you got involved down there. That just, that just needs to stop. I mean, I don't know if we're going to get four more years of you, but your bullying and intimidation and your, you know, underkink mentality really needs to stop. You've lost a lot of support from people's support during the last election and you need to take a look at Southern, maybe realize why. Because you're not qualified.
I would disagree. Well, thank you for your opinion.
You may be good at counseling, you may be good at bossing on little boys, but you're not qualified for the city.
That's enough. You're dead. You're dead.
Okay, we're ready to move on. Assessment unpaid utilities.
Mayor, council, this is, we do this every year. We get a list of utilities that are unpaid as of September of the year. By state statute, we have the authority to assess them to their taxes if they're unpaid. So this is just the list of unpaid utilities and then the resolution two thousand sixteen dash twenty-nine authorizing us to assess them to, or to include them on their two thousand seventeen taxes if they remain unpaid. And they usually get sent around the beginning of November, so anything that's not paid through then will be assessed.
Discussion?
Do these bigger ones here, do these people still live here in town or why are they sometimes?
Some of them, yes. Some of them, no. Some of them are people that have moved out, you know, just left and haven't said anything. They don't pay. Some of them who live here, they just haven't paid.
How does it get so high? Don't they normally shut off?
Yes, we do, but, so they might have a couple hundred or three hundred dollar bill and then we shut the water off. But there's still base charges because the base charges are charged to every meter or every connection, I should say, in town, whether there's a meter or not. So even the lots that aren't built on still get charged base charges, you know, that kind of stuff. So anybody that's got a connection gets a base charge, which pays all the bonds and stuff. So it'll, some of these are ones that have been on even other years. So after the end of the year and we assess their taxes, we write it off and then it starts over until there's somebody there to actually assume it.
For the discussion? Motion to approve two thousand sixteen twenty-nine.
I'd like a motion to approve Resolution two thousand sixteen dash twenty-nine.
I will second it.
Jill?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
I would aye. Lloyd?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
Motion period five votes. Crystal Lane?
Actually, Mayor and Council, we have rental ordinance discussion request.
Okay.
We have, I've been speaking with a resident, they, and he's in the audience today, just had some concerns about rental properties and I don't know if you want to, I can add more to it.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, per your consideration of the total licensing requirement for inspections on rentals. I personally find a few rental properties that don't even have operating smoke detectors or anti-tips on the stoves. These are basic safety issues. I know there's a lot of absentee owners that live down south, have units that they rent out and it's at their discretion what they want to provide. I'd like to see the city step in and see an overview of that inspected properties, making sure they're safe for residents before something happens. The International Code Council does have a publication outlining the minimum requirements for the state of Minnesota for rentals. And that's all I got. If you have any questions?
And I, and I did a little research on, a lot of cities do it differently. Some just require them to be, to actually license with the city so we have, so we know which properties in town are actual rental properties. Some take it further and they actually do inspections one, once a year or every other year. I believe would be done by our building inspector. But that's something that, I, we're just bringing it up for a discussion right now and to get your thoughts and.
How do we know which ones are all rentals? I mean, if they don't come to the city, how would you know?
They have a force.
Right.
Most generally on that, Michelle, is the ones we do know through the utility billing, the renter gets a bill and then also the homeowner or the landlord gets the bill too. So there is a good chunk of that we do know.
You know, the city of Duluth has a place of rental ordinance and they count on honesty, but then also citizens reporting if they know that there's a rental that may or may not be licensed, so.
I, I do have a question. Chuck, did you get, when you were at Brooklyn Center, is that where you were at? Did they have an ordinance there? Did the building inspectors actually inspect them?
Yep.
Is that who did it?
Yeah, it was, I was their assistant. They had influx just because of the number of rentals in Brooklyn Center. And it took three of us two months to get through all of them.
So did they charge like a small fee then, like a rental fee to the homeowner so that does offset the cost of the inspector? Because we'd have to pay the inspector.
Yeah, it even was two hundred dollars for a two-year. You go in, get the inspection, you find any violations, it's a fifty-dollar follow-up to make sure the violations were corrected. The two hundred dollars got your license renewed for two years.
So we could check it for you.
Yeah, Duluth charges, I believe it's six hundred dollars for three years and there's a hundred and seventy-five non-refundable fee just to some application, yeah. And there's, there is an incredibly strict, too. I don't know what Brooklyn parks are like, but.
Yeah, I had a four-page checklist I had to go through.
Yeah, I know. Yeah, we had to, um, pay seven hundred dollars to change two windows simply because they did crank instead of, they slid, so. Little things like that, but whether that's a serious safety concern, but I would agree with the similar things like smoke detectors and things like that.
Something we should look into and see what other cities around are doing as well. May I ask, are you looking into that and what might be appropriate action for discussion?
And what the inspection fee would be so that we can establish if we're in there or how much it would be to have this in put up with? Good.
Yeah?
Yep.
We'll move forward with that.
Anything further?
Uh, not on that.
Okay, Crystal Lane?
Um, Mayor and Council, we're just, actions to be considered is to discuss allowing the Crystal Lane neighborhood to purchase and put up four neighborhood watch signs. Um, the Crystal Lane neighborhood met with the Wright County Sheriff's Department to establish a neighborhood watch program for their neighborhood. And they're looking at purchasing the signs and putting them up at the entrances of their neighborhood. And they're just wondering if after the purchase, if they could get the help of the city works, public, uh, public works department to help with the installation of the signs. And we'd like to do that as soon as possible.
Okay, do I have something else?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
We're actually Neighborhood Watch captain for that, and what we wanna do is have some kind of policy in place on the 13th, I understand you're having another Neighborhood Watch...
Meeting.
Meeting to get everybody interested and talking about it. Uh, what I'd like to see is, we have people that have put up funds, if necessary, to buy these signs. What I don't want to do is us buy these signs, and then this takes off, and the city has got a policy where they put up the signs, they buy the signs. And I just wanna get everything on one ground level, or on the same plane deal before we go ahead and pay for them, and then the policy changes, and then I've got people coming to me asking for their money back.
Sean, do you have any history on that?
Um, Chuck and I had a discussion earlier last week on this, uh, we did look at some signs, um... There is no budgeting for 2016 on signs, that's for certain. And if we were to go down that road, what, fifteen bucks a sign, John?
Fifteen with shipping, just on your, three rounds, ten bucks, you said?
Twenty-five dollars a sign, four signs, just a hundred bucks, twenty-five bucks a sign. I guess it depends on how many signs we're looking at. Three hundred, one hundred fifty, what's gonna happen?
It has to be an established watch before you just blast it.
How many signs are you looking at getting?
Four. One at each end of Crystal, and then in our watch, we also have Crystal Circle and Park Place Circle, so it takes up that whole stretch of road.
You need about four, four signs?
Yeah, entrance each cul-de-sac, and then each end of Crystal Lane. So I just like to know, the city's gonna make a policy, or if we go ahead and order these, I just don't wanna...
I think, I think right now, it's not a problem with us installing them.
Okay.
I don't think we have anything to budget as far as purchasing the watch signs or anything.
Okay, I just wanna make sure that if we pay for them, the next watch program pays for them.
Did you have a cost I didn't hear of, usually, a hundred dollars per sign?
Twenty-five dollars per sign.
Twenty-five dollars per sign, so, okay. I think that would, I mean, that would be a discussion that we would have on Thursday, then if they wanna, you know?
Yeah.
Then if they signed their twenty-five dollars for the neighborhood? If they're pushing a bunch?
Yeah, Wednesday was, yeah, I just didn't want...
Oh, yeah.
Wednesday, somebody else will come up here and say, well, hey, can you buy the signs?
You buy the signs.
Hey, and I, we're like, hey.
And then work where Sean is installing them, and Sean, you have any problem, problem installing the signs?
Absolutely not. I do wanna remind the council that, um, for the next few years, our sign budget's gonna be pretty much consumed with, uh... Sign retroreflectivity monitoring, that is a program that's been, uh, approved by the state of Minnesota, and we're currently in the inspection phase of that. We've already started doing some replacement of, um, certain control signs, speed limit signs, and so... Like I said, our budget's going to be ate up primarily replacing current signs that don't meet retroreflectivity standards, so... If we go through this, we need to know some kind of...
In a park and rec meeting, signs were brought up and at a certain cost, and... That's not the same discussion that we had in park and rec meeting?
Well, it's a different budget, that's part of the rec meeting.
Oh, I thought you were talking about it was just in the sign budget.
No, that's sweet signs.
So there?
Thank you, Charlotte.
I know a neighborhood watch really works. I managed the trailer park down here in Montrose for years, and we had Neighborhood Watch down there, and I'll tell you, we cut the crime down. And the park paid for their signs, and I do think the city should pay for them, because it's, it's a... It just helps the city, because these signs will stay in the city, and our general fund should have money for it.
That twenty-five dollars a sign, how many?
Well, you'd need one on every street.
Right, but I mean, just in their neighborhood alone, that was four, that's only like two, two whole sets in the street, right?
Yeah.
And their signs are about this big.
Right. We figure we have...
And then you can also get the smaller ones, where I couldn't point you what they are.
But you can only put them in the, wherever there's a Neighborhood Watch program actually.
Right.
The neighborhood signs up, or the neighborhood that signs up.
Right, but, you know, like, Chuck's concern is, Thursday, we're having this program, if people wanna do it, there could be twenty neighborhoods that wanna do this, and cause a twenty-five dollars sign... For a neighborhood, and why?
Right. That's a huge, we don't even budget four grand a year for sign street signs, so...
Well, and, and, you know, there might be lots of people, and maybe only a couple neighborhoods decide to actually move forward with it.
Right, no, I think this would be, um, you know, I think we can be that, placing the signs is perfectly okay, but I think the purchase of the sign should be held up until after we have this meeting.
And just to kind of see where we're at?
See what the interest...
Well, if it's established, you can buy even a small sign and put in your window, and it does help.
So are you okay with leaving, Chuck?
Well, I still have the opinion that it stays with the neighborhood.
And the neighborhood purchases.
It's the, if the, if those residents are so concerned, I mean, I know I could come up with twenty-five bucks for a sign.
Right, I mean, if you trust a person in a buck or two.
Okay, now, okay, a car hits the signpost or something like that, wipes out our sign, that's connected to your signpost, you buy the new sign.
Insurance company? Insurance company, I don't know.
The city's snowfall, the city's snowfall here.
We have a drop-in.
So, I mean, if the city were to damage a sign that you purchased? Well, I think in different places, just like if they would've damaged one that the city purchased, you know?
Right, right.
I think it could be left to the neighborhood, don't think, Chuck.
I would, I would agree. I'm, I'm okay with either way, as long as they're the same throughout the city, they don't have any, for different styles, or...
Right.
They'd all be the same.
Standard.
I think, yeah, I think after Thursday moving forward, each, like, you're the captain of your neighborhood, each person would get together, you all would agree on the sign, so that it's, you know...
Or everybody can go to...
Just coordinate, Michelle.
Yeah.
He's got it.
Right, I mean, and just kind of so that we all stay the same, so that we don't have, well, this one and the other.
And that's what I'm saying, we have a policy in place, who's gonna pay for them, what style of signs do we allow?
If an outside owner...
Doesn't, yeah, doesn't turn into a repeat center.
Okay, I know we're on the side of the menu, but we have to change SBD.
My name, how many of you guys there are on Wednesday? Four thirty? Can I have a cap stopping it, um, again? You okay? It's about the time I get out of work and sport, maybe, Chuck. Thanks.
Because you can buy them online, too, but then you're gonna have to get approved by the city.
Do you want him to bring it back to you then, or just, or do you want it, like, in and go with the utility box?
You can just throw it in the drop box, even just the way it is, because then it just picks them up more.
I had a, uh, open forum request with Jan Kedau. Jan, I, I know this is a partisan race, and we do need to remain nonpartisan, so it asks not to have people in it, but you're welcome to go ahead and talk to people afterwards.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And Rue, you had done one reference to bowling bombs, um, the Comcast data restriction notice, and down all four of them.
Before, you can come up, but I have a question before that. The Jan Kedau thing, can it wait to circle, Jason Blant's gonna come and talk?
Yeah, it's a nonpartisan race, this is a partisan race.
No, no, I mean, political, anyway.
Jason's is a nonpartisan race, that's a partisan race. And we talked about that with legal, and since it is a partisan race, we address that. Go ahead.
Um, the first one, we'll start with Comcast, was just simply Comcast has sent the letters out to people like, not fair internet service. Uh, and has said, this is what we're gonna give you guys for your package, and told you what you have, blah, blah, blah. I just thought it might be a group time for council to maybe discuss potential options, since their contract has just been a continual extension, and not actually been done, since they're trying to do that merger. Personally, it's not really gonna affect me one way or the other, but if you have a home-based business, if you're doing a lot of, you know, get kids, you're doing movie downloads and things like that, places like that could potentially be effective, so I just thought maybe we could point out about, to raise some awareness and do some discussion.
I think as it comes up, we should look at opening it up for, uh, other options as well, uh, we're three months away from it right now, but we have a contract.
Mr. Mayor, I think our contract, I mean, I know we have a contract for March, I think it's considered an open-ended contract, isn't it, maybe?
Yeah.
Any service can come in that wants to, it's just a matter of if anybody wants to.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I don't know if there's anybody that's interested in having any other service here because of the cost of bringing everything in, but, but if there's anybody else that wants to come in, they can come in.
Yeah, they can look into it a little more.
So, yeah, how can we notify other cable companies?
Um, I've been talking to other cities, kind of what their approach is, and, um, it is tough, because we are kind of rural, um, and it's harder to get these companies to come out and invest. But, um, I think there might be some, somebody, a former colleague said that there's some funding for fiber optic cable, so I might start looking into that and seeing if we would qualify, or... I don't even know what the process is, so I still have to do a lot more research, but it is a start, so... I mean, I know, I think Buffalo has, whether I was just complaining on one of the Facebook pages, I think last week, about, who's the other big one up here?
Charter.
Charter, yeah, and, I mean, they have an equally large number of upset customers, so they're all kind of... I think it's just a business, too, I mean, I mean, you can get, you know, five different ones in here, and everybody's gonna be unhappy with one or happy with another, but, I mean... But it would be nice to potentially have two different options, as far as cable goes, but it can remain competitive, because right now there's only one option. They don't have to be competitive. And they're not have to be different styles.
Which is my struggle.
So, I think we were just notified by, there's Windstream Cable in town, too.
Oh, yes.
But we were just notified by Windstream, but I believe they're gonna stop the cable service in Montrose, because of the small city. So it's kind of tough where we're sitting, um, we had talked to Charter a number of years ago, and they weren't at all interested in us. So it's just a matter of if we can convince somebody else to come into the area, by the time they lay their lines and all that kind of stuff, and such things.
Maybe we may be stuck with them, but just concerning me that here's this trend, and let's start restricting it down, and, you know, you start having just much of a freeze in, and cut it in half.
I didn't know Comcast was anything.
Yeah, they can send their liberal...
It is, um, one terabyte, which is a thousand and twenty-four gigabytes, is what they're restricting it to right now. To the whole city?
No.
Eight, no, to the whole, each customer, so...
Yeah, but that, I mean, if we're... Nothing, I mean, I wouldn't use that, I wouldn't use that in ten years, but some people could use that, and lots of people.
Well, no, we've ever, I like, at City Hall, I don't think we're restricted to anything, so maybe it's not businesses.
It starts in November first.
I don't think we've been notified of anything, so maybe it's not businesses, maybe it's something that's...
Yeah, maybe it's residential.
I didn't forward my copy, uh, to Councilor Donald, so she has permission to forward that to whoever wants to see it.
Bowling ball?
Yes, um, I know, I heard Sean talk about, um, about this several times, that there, you kind of been budgeting money, and, and that down the road, it was gonna come a time where the ponds were gonna have to be cleaned and getting other things. And I know that's kind of on like a ten-year warranty, and so I was kind of wondering if any of them have been done, and so which ones, kind of what, how was, was it working, are you taking the old ones first, is there certain neighborhoods, it's like mine, we're at eleven years, so I was just kind of wondering, the more of what the newer develops, so I was just kind of wondering what was happening, and what the plan was.
Well, what we've been doing is, we get to easily accessible ones, easily meaning with, uh, backhoe. Went out to, did Forest Creek last year, we did, um, a ditch going through skateboarding park, second time within five years, um, to dredge, uh, that area. Uh, we're looking at doing some stormwater work off of Garfield this fall, if it quits raining. And we actually were doing some work on the end of Aspen Lane today, um, there is a company that's trying to develop a barge that will come in and dredge these ponds out. However, they're pretty, they're still in their infancy, and there's not a whole lot of information out, but I know, I haven't worked in several months either, but there is some rumors that they're breaking up, going on their own, so, um...
How much access do you need, just, and just out of curiosity, like, that point behind the neighbor at the end of the seventh street, would that be enough accessibility?
I'm not sure, what they need, we're gonna have to take a crane, it'll be more responsive, too, I don't know.
Oh, okay, and, and again, I don't know what, what's all involved, and I don't know what you guys do. Would it be something where you really wanna use the back half of our property, that empty space, you know, that full lot back there?
Well, rightly, on your particular case, we would go on the back west side of the pond and come in that way, off of the field. We have done some dredging work out there years ago, further upstream, but then we also did some work around the cul-de-sac, and then the cul-de-sac extension, but as far as actual dredging out of the middle, we have not done any of that one. So it's still large, it's hard to...
Yeah, it's hard to reach it, you can't get all the way up.
Sean, I have a question regarding the drainage, is that the only way, or is there some sort of chemical treatment or something that can be done, or?
The only type of chemical treatment would be if it had any organics in it, you know, when you're talking sand, it's organic, um, rocks, sand, it's gonna be physically removed. If there is one, I'm not aware, do you know any justice?
Yeah, is it refilled then, and is there any...
Years ago, before I started here, we used a lot of sand on our streets in the wintertime, and I don't know if you've noticed, we've gotten away from that. And it's slowed down considerably from where it used to fill the stormwater ponds, so we're in the process of cleaning out what we can, and then budgeting more money to bring dredges in for the bigger ones, and, um... Well, usually what happens on the inlet of those ponds, that's where it settles out right away. We just take that settle-out portion out and we're kind of minimally invasive as possible to pull that.
One of the reasons that I've been asking is, you know, we've had discussions with ours over the years with different things, both of you guys have been involved with that. Between that and a muskrat problem that is there, our backyard has gotten to the point where we've already brought in over forty ton of rock and it's not helping the problem. We literally, on our fence side of the backyard, can be walking through the backyard and fall through almost knee-deep and deep in water. It's literally at the point where it's not safe for adults or kids to be down to a certain point in our backyard. So we're trying to find remedies. We have talked to a tracker now to come and get rid of the muskrats. We've got that forty ton of rock and we've got another forty, fifty ton that is hopefully gonna get in the water. By the time we're done, that section of our property from fence to fence will look like the North Shore. But it's the only thing that we can think of to do to keep, you know, any more of the DRC in and eroding. If you guys got suggestions, I'm all for it, but that was my question, was just how your process was for it.
The city has spent a considerable amount of funds on that pond in the last five years. Unfortunately, you're not the only pond in town, and we've only got a limited budget and we can certainly look at that again and see if there's some kind of minor tweak we could do to help alleviate that pressure.
Well, I'm not even looking for you guys to do it, you just have a suggestion of something that I can do, you know, with maybe you can, you know, just when you're out and about, look at what we've done so far and see if there's something better that we can do that needs to be deeper, that needs to...
Certainly worth a look at, if you're convinced.
And the last statement I have is, of course, everyone knows that this is election season and Wednesday night we will have a town hall, open forum style candidate, kind of meet candidates, is here at seven o'clock. Most of the candidates that have filed to run for this election have RSVP'd that they will be present, so I'd like to invite the public to come and ask questions, because it will all be citizens ask questions, nothing prepared, nothing by committee, strictly just citizens asking questions of those that are running. So again, here's Wednesday at seven o'clock.
I had a quick question about that. I was thinking about this earlier today. So if someone in the audience has a question, is it going to be answered by all of them there or is it just supposed to be directed to a specific person?
They may ask the mayoral, they may ask two of the mayoral candidates, which would be both of them, just the council candidates.
Okay.
Or all of them. It can't just be a single person.
A single person.
Yeah, there will be some, there's some definite strict rules for it.
Sure, sure. Do you want any of the, or any of them should be submitted in advance or is it just literally?
You certainly can do it in advance if you want to. You certainly can do it in advance if you want to send them to me, you can.
I was just curious how this is gonna work.
Oh, is that me? We'll do it right there.
Okay.
Hopefully, if people realize it's not gonna be a debate, it's just answering questions so it will not be like we saw on TV last night.
Brew, before it's up, do you need, I think you're gonna need the sound system. So Sean, can you guys maybe bring out the desk on Wednesday? Sometime Wednesday, can you pull the desk out from the wall and have them hook the mics up? We don't need any tables, but...
Actually, if we can, I'd rather not use this because it sits so high. I'd like to actually just have a long table with the mics on.
With some mics, okay, whatever, however they can set up with some mics. I don't know that we can with those, I think.
They're kind of attached.
Yeah.
Whatever we can do.
So we'd have three that they could use.
That'd be good.
Will we have any wireless ones?
Not, we have one wireless.
Well, there's only seven people.
So if we just set up the tables and have them plug the system in?
Mm-hmm. Yes, that would be one thing. Thanks.
Thanks, Brew.
Thanks, Brew.
Hey, anything further? Acknowledgements?
I have October seventeenth, there's personnel committee meeting at three o'clock at City Golf. October nineteenth, two thousand sixteen is planning zoning commission at seven at the community center.
Well, in there, can I add a couple things, a couple, October twenty-first is the Halloween dance. It's not a meeting, but it's still... October twenty-ninth is bingo at school.
Is that on Friday?
I don't know, she sent me...
I could be wrong, but I just always said it's Friday.
It's Tuesday, Friday. Yeah, right.
Which was the twenty-second, so I just...
I said one of those trains. Bingo was October twenty-ninth.
Oh.
Seventy.
That is set, I don't know.
I don't know, that came from one of the PAC people. And then they are looking for volunteers, so there is a sign-up channel on Facebook. And then, of course, the volunteer dinner is the twenty-seventh, but this month is one.
Any others?
And the Halloween declaration contest. We'll do the judging on Friday to twenty-eighth of October, about six-thirty.
Keep your lights on.
Any acknowledgement?
Could I acknowledge all of our tractor and the work in the park and putting up with my crazy antics to do that?
I just honestly, I was very, people were really excited about it, so, like I said, we're looking forward to next year, adding a couple more vendors, so.
It's a good thing with all of your vendors saying, "We're looking for this next year" and we have friends that we want to bring too, so.
Can I add to, at the Montrose Days meeting last night, they are looking for, there's six open board positions for that group, the Montrose Days Committee. Currently, there's four that are out and out, but they're looking to add two more positions. So, or any volunteers, if anybody wants to volunteer, be a part of planning Montrose Days, they can contact Cory, Lori, or Jeff.
Or if you don't know who any of those people are, contact one of us.
You can contact Jeff, she is the liaison for Montrose Days, so.
I've got one question. Has anybody heard when the parade is in Anoka?
No. I heard, but I can't remember. It's this month, though.
I thought it was on the twenty-ninth, but I don't remember the time. It's usually during, earlier in the day, I want to say.
Yeah, it's usually around noon.
Yeah, around midnight.
It's on a Saturday, I just remember thinking, I don't know.
I'm almost positive it's the twenty-ninth, but I don't know for sure what time. Just not at night, if you know that.
We'll be in touch with the world, okay? Just about maybe.
October twenty-ninth at one. Grand Day Parade, yep.
That's centered?
Yep.
What time did you say it was?
One p.m.
One p.m. I can acknowledge fire department, all the work they've done, especially the structure fire, and also the tree group, our four Eagle Scouts issue. And Chuck Smallwood, you're setting up? Neighborhood Watch, being block captain. It was a group of us. I know, and a lot of people, Tommy Anderson showed up for a meeting, he was awesome.
I may be putting Thursday.
Hi, I'm talking to everybody here. I'll probably be here. Anything further? Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, second.
Michelle?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
I would aye, Lloyd?
Aye.
Allison?
Aye.